This conference will now be recorded.
We would all please rise. Okay, just as a reminder, please make sure if you have a device that it's on mute. Those that are online attending via the web meeting, please make sure your lines are on mute until you're called upon to speak. I would do a roll call and then ask for special permission for Mr. Guy. So we've got Supervisor Walsh, Supervisor Tinkle, Supervisor Banks, Supervisor Geppert, and we've got Supervisor Guy, which I need a motion for to allow participation under special circumstances.
Exceptional circumstances.
We're closed. First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Um, we are going to look for motion to approve the final agenda with the addition of 4A.
So this item came up as a request of Board Member Geppert for a prior resolution that the Board saw at your last meeting. P-PAC has had the opportunity to meet in the interim, and I'll let Mr. Geppert expound on that.
At the...
You want an agenda approval first before you do that?
I think I'm not sure what the right order is, but I think I would know what you're voting on, I guess.
To approve you to talk.
We'll have a motion to approve, and then we'll have a discussion, and you can take off today.
You making that motion, Bob?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Motion, second. So discussion. So now, Bob, you can jump in and give the history.
Okay, at the October P-PAC meeting, an item came up to install the landscape work group or restore the landscape work group back to its original intent that was deleted by the redline version that we approved in the last board meeting or are in the process of approving. Agenda item 2301. So what you have here today in the board book is what was approved in that in our meeting of 2301. And what I'm suggesting and was affirmed by P-PAC is that the redline items in that document are removed, and we go with the original document, which was developed by the district manager, the assistant district manager, the attorney, the P-PAC chairman, and myself. So...
To clarify, you don't want to remove the redline items. You want to remove the redline from the items in the resolution.
That is correct.
Yes, making sure.
Well, that is correct as it terms for item B, exhibit D, but for... But for item...
Do not accept the redline.
Correct. Do not accept.
What Laura and Chelsea are saying is the correct approach because one was a deletion, one was a addition. So if you don't accept it, then it was bad.
In English.
Do not accept the redlines. Okay.
And what this would require, if the Board were to do that, would be to adopt a new resolution, either amending the prior resolution or rescinding the prior resolution, have a brand-new resolution because it's too late for reconsideration under the district's policies for the Board.
Then I'll make a motion. We rescind the prior, once that's been...
And that would be to rescind, is it 2023-01?
Wait, the first thing we have to do is we have to approve, approve the...
We did that. We just did that.
We approved this item for the agenda? Okay.
And then also, Mr. Chairman, to allow any members of the public to comment on it, I think would be appropriate also. I don't know if anybody signed up for it, or Chelsea.
I don't have anyone for comments on this particular...
So landscaping now is going to be under a separate committee, or it's going to stay under the P-PAC?
Stay under P-PAC.
Stay under P-PAC.
It becomes a function of P-PAC.
Okay, okay.
So there were... I'm sorry, if the Board's inclined, there would be two actions. One would be to rescind and repeal, and I don't have that resolution in front of me, but I can then prepare the resolution for the chair's signature, repeal and rescind Resolution number 2023-01, and then adopt a new resolution, 2023...
Grant five? I don't know. Let's check.
Whatever the next resolution number is, which would basically delete the additional language at the bottom of page two of the resolution in your book. And when you get to exhibit B, not delete what is struck out. That is correct. The alternative is to amend the prior resolution, but that gets more awkward, quite frankly.
Yeah, let's go the former way.
Yeah, it would be to repeal and rescind Resolution number 2023-01 would be the first step.
I'll make that resolution to...
I'll second that motion.
Rescind 2301.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? So we will rescind, and then we will...
Then we'll have a new motion.
Correct.
I will call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
And that motion would also incorporate preparation of the resolution, rescinding Resolution 2023-01, and authorizing the chairman to decide.
Tony, it would be number five. It would be 2023-5.
Okay, thank you. And so the next action, if the Board is so inclined, would be to adopt Resolution number 2023-05, which would be the resolution that is in your book, but deleting the underlined language under section 8E, like in Edward 2, the last line, and that would reinstate and not accept the deletion in exhibit B at the landscape subcommittee.
Just for clarity, in that E, it says, under P-PAC, subcommittees to assist the committee would include ponds, conservation areas, landscaping. Now it would be a subcommittee.
Correct.
Safety and security. But at the end of the day, these all fall under...
P-PAC.
P-PAC.
That is correct. And then we deal with P-PAC direct.
Correct. So...
That's sweet on a...
And again, I know historically Pelican has these committees and, you know, there's volunteers that are accountable for these areas, but ultimately still, the staff will have to maintain oversight in these areas. And in the event that something is missed, or an oversight, or something on those lines, that would defer back to, really to the district, because the P-PAC is just, I mean, there's no authority.
Well, the one thing they do that I saw is that there is a P-PAC member on each of the committees.
That is correct.
That will help.
Either as liaison or otherwise.
That'll help. That'll help. Then we have somebody, I believe, at the P-PAC meetings then, that if we see something that is contrary to policy or what we do, we can interject that such that it goes to them, and they make their decision based on that before it comes here, and then we dump it.
Yeah, I'm the liaison for P-PAC, so I attend all of the P-PAC meetings, and I'm currently attending all of the subcommittee meetings as well.
Also.
But there will be others, just because we don't have other staff assignment, but there'll be others. Like Keith is going to do safety and security, and Jim is going to do landscaping, and then Al will probably be like the staff liaison for ponds, possibly. We haven't ironed that one out yet, but I am attending all of the P-PAC meetings right now.
I think that's the way to go.
And just for the Board's knowledge, there's a distinct effort made to change the title from work groups, which we were all familiar with, to subcommittee. And that is so that all of these subcommittees or work groups now come into compliance with the Florida sunshine laws. That's one of the big changes that we're doing, is now we are completely compliant.
So this new deal that we're going to talk about later, that addresses that issue.
You mean the protocol?
Yeah.
That's part of it.
That's part of it. Okay.
And Supervisor Walsh, just reminding you, Mr. Chairman, you know, because I have a black line, not red line first. In 2E, the word landscaping was struck. That needs to be not accepted as a deletion to ensure that stays reinserted. That was the clarification. When we adopt the new Resolution 2023-05.
Correct. You gonna make that note?
Okay, I'll move.
I'll second the 2023-05.
And just for discussion, staff, do you think that there, upon further review, and as these committees' roles and responsibilities, scope of oversight is baked out, do you anticipate any adjustment to district staff, to level of effort, to, you know...
Resources.
Resources, yeah.
Yes, we anticipate this to be front-end heavy. We've had lengthy conversations with Mr. Geppert. And hopefully, once all of the issues get ironed out in direction, that our staff time will be lessened. But as of right now, it's going to take quite a bit of staff time to establish these and get these up and running.
And is Pelican Reserve HOA...
That's what, that's what time sheets are for.
And that's what I was going to go with, like, we did, you know, budget time last year was about the 5%, the 3%. And if we're going to allocate more resources, and I think, I think we mentioned that that's what we were going to do last year. I don't know if we're keeping up the trend for both Stony Brook and P-PAC.
So...
P-PAC HOA in line?
One of the things...
Bill, come on to the mic.
I'm sorry, Phil, if you wouldn't mind.
Mr. Chairman, while Mr. Mees is coming up, just for, I'll call it, housekeeping issue. The new resolution would be 2023-06, because 2023-05 would be the one repealing 2023-01. So I just was doing that in my head, so I apologize.
The reason why I asked Phil to come up is because there could be some impact.
Financially.
Financially.
Yeah.
P-PAC has no, no authority on the, technically.
They got a budget, so why can't we just keep time so that we know where we're at relative to the expenditure versus the budget?
Well, we can. And I see that's what we do, but I just want to make sure that the, that Pelican Reserve HOA are in support of this, because they're the ones that are managing the budget, right?
And it passed 5-2? The resolution to adopt the landscape work group and the motion passed P-PAC 5 to 2.
5 to 2, that's correct.
But we're talking about the financial. They understand that there will be a, there may be a financial increase because now we're allocating more staff, which is having a cost to the HOA. That's, I guess, what, that's my concern, and I think that's...
Some of it, and I won't speak for Philly certainly, is that's recognized that there will be a cost. However, there's an offset because we are currently paying for the services of Castle, $93,000 a year, and that should be significantly diminished in the future.
Is that our landmark here? We shoot for $93,000 on this?
I'll give it to you 91.5.
I don't think, I don't think that, you know, it's not going to be a total savings, because we're probably going to allocate that money to the work groups.
If we watch it on a monthly basis, we can see what we have budgeted and see what we're spending, and then adjust if necessary to see, you know, to make it work. And then we'll have numbers then that will be able to be used by you guys to do your projections the following year.
I just want to see what HOA is...
I hear you. But the bottom line is, the last thing I'll say, is in order to conform to sunshine, we have to do this. Even if we stayed with the old structure, in order to conform to sunshine, the subcommittees are going to require staff work. So no matter what else happens, there's going to be additional costs.
Phil Mees, P-PAC, I would like to suggest that we are probably putting extra work into this process by involving the staff as well as the Castle and the PPCA in this work. Right now, and we need to sit down and work out what the procedures will be. But my feeling is, in starting to look at this, is that there's going to be extra work because we now have two people looking at things that only one person used to look at before. We've got somebody in our group, in the PPCA Castle group, that is looking at some of these tickets, these invoices, and then we have the staff doing the same thing.
Why can't we just sit down and put together a budget on a monthly basis and see what the dollars are projected based upon those number of hours that are going to be spent, and just see what that compares with what the budget was? In other words, if you're going to have eight hours a month, or six hours a month, or 12 hours, and it's not in there, just factor that in there. But then, on the other side, take the negative out. The Castle's going to omit and see what the net is.
Well, but is Castle no longer responsible?
Well, that...
Is that...
That's unclear. That's unclear. In other words, there are lots of things that Castle is doing now. I don't know whether the staff will be in a position to pick up all of these things. There are small, there are small budgets, or not budgets, but amounts spent on, for instance, cleaning fountains. We've got a little, you know, work orders to do that kind of thing. Lots of small stuff, administrative stuff that are now being done by Castle that I guess are going to be done by the staff, but I'm not sure that that's...
By staff or the committee?
No, the staff. Committee doesn't have authority to pay.
I know, that's what I'm trying to make it.
It would be by staff. We don't...
Again, somebody's going to sit down and put some pencil and paper as to what the amount of time that we're going to spend to be able to compare it back to what it is, and then we go from there.
Absolutely.
Because I have no idea what we're talking about here, is the number of hours that we're adding to the system that's not in it right now.
Well, to the extent that we've operated 15 years with a ponds work group, and the effort is to make safety and security and landscaping function similarly, and what the impact has been on staff for ponds, I mean, initially, obviously, it's going to be, until we all get used to the new system, it'll be additional. But then we expect that to level out pretty quickly, within two or three months.
And...
And we are looking for an offset.
Any issues from staff's perspective?
There aren't any immediate issues from staff's perspective, no. There's just, I mean, like Mr. Geppert said, there are some things we'll need to iron out, but ponds is pretty much already running itself. Safety and security is getting up to speed really fast. And by the time that we get them fully on board, then we'd be bringing on the landscaping committee. So it's not like all three of these things are hitting staff all at once. Like I said, ponds is pretty much already in place, and then we're implementing safety and security behind them, and then landscaping will come on behind them. So it's, it's not as big of a burden as it would be if we were trying to do everything all at once.
Thanks, Phil. So we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2306. I will call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, moving on to public comments.
I do have a question. So if we have to pull anything from item 11, are we voting on all those items individually or all together in a bunch?
Individually.
Okay.
Consent is as one.
So public comments?
Yes.
I know you didn't want to go first, but you're the only one, so...
That doesn't mean you get double time.
Kathy Flaherty has, she's requesting to speak about item 11D.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Kathy Flaherty. I'm from Stony Brook. I'm looking at the state road gateway in 82 and the medium pilot program that you have in place in front of Stony Brook. First, I'd like to say that I thought that you were going to at least talk to the Stony Brook people to get some input from them. None of them know that this is going on. You know, I'm very surprised that. And I have to tell you, you have removal of exorals. On July 28th, when I was out with Freddie and Jim my last time, both Freddie and Jim stated that dwarf exorals do not require any care. So why...
Don't what?
Do not require any care. They're like, let them go. That was their words. They can just do what they want, you know? So to me, to pull them out is, seems senseless. The other thing is, one of the things I was concerned about is when you put in synthetic stuff, the runoff from this synthetic stuff. So therefore, we're going to have flooding in the streets? How can we guarantee there's not going to be flooding in the streets? That's a very narrow area. If you have flooding, it's bad. And the exit, you know, you didn't come to Stony Brook. I won't take five seconds to worry. But if it was in front of certain, of your communities, you would be very upset, too, if nobody came to you and say, gee, we need to do something, at least contact the president of the HOA so he could contact the residents and they could get together. And we know that if it was in front of your, some of your communities, you would be doing that. Just, you know, and not just put it out on the agenda, and then I read the agenda. Some people don't, okay? And so I really don't like that, you know, this is like, not a transparent because it could have been put it out and to the HOA first so that they would know. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone online to speak?
I have no one in the chat, and I'm not aware of any emails or faxes that came over for this meeting.
Any recognitions from the Board or from staff? I do just want to recognize staff's ongoing efforts as a follow-up to the hurricane debris is being picked up. It's not all done yet, but, and the staff's been busy getting back to business as usual. So again, I just want to recognize staff. Advisory Committee items and reports. Any discussion?
We didn't receive any written updates.
Great. Need a motion to approve minutes for item 8A?
I have one question. On page four of those minutes, item B, the third paragraph, Mr. Andy Nott, his name is N-O-T-T, not K-N-O-T-T. I just picked that up late.
Are you talking about the minutes, or are you talking about...
Minutes.
Minutes.
Eight, eight.
Minutes, over six minutes.
Okay.
And is it, I have a question. Is it the contract with Andy Nott, or is it with the company?
It's with the company.
Then I think you shouldn't even say his name. You should say with the company.
Well, but in the reference to, this is on here, he was the gentleman at the time with another company that did the work. That's why he's referenced.
So his name is called out, just in conversation?
Called out because he was a resource with another company.
But the way it's, let me go through the motion. The way it's saying is, we're going from one to go with Andy Nott. You're not going with Andy Nott. You're going with the, with the company that Andy Nott works for. So if he leaves, then that, does it make sense what I'm saying?
Yeah, I understand.
I think what Supervisor Walsh is saying, it should be from C-E-S to Superior. That seems like the context. Is that correct, Chelsea or...
No, the context is that that gentleman was the original installer of the design from CES, and he is now at Superior. That's what the minutes say. So it's the...
The motion is what Flavi is saying. On the motion, Mr. Geppert's second, the Pelican from CES to Andy Nott, that should be to Superior.
Yes.
And all I was trying to do was correct his name.
This was the first time I saw that the minutes came out and they had a red draft on it. I've never seen that before. Was there something? I was looking for a red line, never saw it. Just, was that a...
That's the draft prior to you all approving them.
And is it because it's posted online, and then you're making sure it's a draft? I figured that.
All right. So with that, with those two updates, any additional motion to approve?
As amended.
I make that motion?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Do you have a motion to approve consent agenda items 9A and B?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just had some questions about going to general engineering.
Yeah, mine went into the next item, not this item.
Oh, you're right. I'm ahead of myself. I'm sorry. Okay.
I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Perfect, thank you. We will move on to 10A, District Engineer's Board.
We have him here.
Good afternoon, everyone. Stephen Agapi, Tetra Tech. It's good to see you all again. It's been a while. Glad to see Gateway did so well after the storm.
Thank you.
I have a task authorization list that's been updated. We added back in authorization dates and schedule of completion dates from those task authorizations as requested. I'll just take some of the highlights from the projects I'm working on specifically, the flowway weir adjustments. We finally got our permit for the three main weirs in the flowway last week. We're wrapping up bid documents right now. We'll have that for staff to review over the next few days. And we plan to bring to the Board by January 19th, a bid recommendation. So between now and January, we'll be going through the bidding process. And we'll plan for construction to commence right after that and be done in the dry season.
Are we going to have one?
I hope so. We need it. We need it for that and for the lake bank restoration as well, so... And on that, for the lake bank restoration, we have a scheduled meeting for October 25th with Met Tower, a pre-con meeting. We've talked about pushing that back a little bit just because there has been a lot more rain. So we're working with the contractor to get them up to date and keep us current and get them in as soon as they see fit. So as soon as the rains stop, they can get in there and draw down some of the lakes and get to work. Avila circle resurfacing. We have GeoTech going out there tomorrow to take core samples of the road, and that's pretty much the first step. We'll be able to finish up the plans shortly after that and get that project out for quotes. Let's see here, the Gateway admin building.
Well, before we leave the Avila Road, the timeline that I'm aware of, just confirm that it seems reasonable. Core sampling, as you said, is tomorrow. We should have the design completed within the month of November.
Yes.
And we should be able to get quotes sometime in the month of December.
Correct.
And we should start to build in January of '23.
Yeah.
All things, without hiccups.
Yeah, it just, it depends on the contractor's availability, but yeah.
Correct.
Yes.
In light of, you know, Ian and all that.
That would be the fastest possible, yeah.
Thank you.
No problem. Gateway storage, utility storage building for this premise. We've worked with staff to get some initial comments on the design criteria. We're working to do the preliminary layout of that building. So that's kind of where that project's at. The Gateway admin building, this was for the task 1 through 3. That was approved a while back. This gets us through the preliminary design. We're getting close to the end of that. We plan on bringing our preliminary, like, layout and location on the site at the November 17th meeting for y'all to...
Footprint for the park?
It's at the...
Facility's here.
For the admin building at the Commons, at the Commons location.
Steve, just, you know, what I'd like to see is, when we have our scheduled completion date, if we surpass that, if we can just strike through and put the amended date.
Yeah.
So that way we know what, where the goal line is.
Of course.
And I would imagine if there's a target date that is missed, the activity or next step should indicate...
What's going on.
What's going on and why there is a delay or the, I mean, I know some of these are swag date, but that would be very helpful.
Yeah, of course.
Okay, in reference to the Pelican Reserve Boulevard and Cypress Grove lighting project, it is my understanding that the engineering is completed. The problem that we have had is that, and it's contracted, was preliminary established, West Coast lighting. We need the plans and the prints once that West Coast selection has been approved by P-PAC. And as I understand it, an item has been added to the P-PAC agenda from the safety and security work group, saying that they approve of the design that Tetra Tech brought forward because it is an improvement of the existing situation. And installing a twin light pole, more decorative, in the $25,000 range, will meet their needs. Even though it may not be a total design criteria home run based on that intersection, if it was outside the community. If it was in a very heavily trafficked area, the lighting requirement would be more intense than this. So they're willing, they have agreed to accept this, and they are going to recommend that the next P-PAC meeting, safety and security, that we move forward with.
Right.
That's my understanding as it sits right now. Now, after P-PAC approves it, we'll do it next month, and then it's a go.
Okay, so the only thing you need from us is an updated figure showing just that pole with a twin light?
Yeah, and the exact location of where it's going to be installed, which will be at that median between Cypress Grove and Pelican Reserve Boulevard.
Nothing should have changed since the Seminole.
No.
Yeah, it wasn't in our original one. I think that came up after we made our original recommendation. And we kind of looked at it without amending our report, saying, yes, we looked at it, said, yes, it would work. It just wouldn't provide the, you know, the same level of lighting that we had recommended. So you just need a figure to give to your contractor. Yeah.
So we're moving forward with it, which is the good news, and it will improve the community. Okay, thank you, Steve. Yep.
Steve, has anybody done any looking at our flow system relative to changes, modifications? Something has happened because typically on basin five, we're five at the end, our last one.
Yeah.
When we have heavy rain, like we've had for this last period of time, once the rain subsided, and it has subsided since the storm, we see a drop in that water level. It ain't happening.
So...
Are we getting water from someplace else that, is Timber Creek coming in?
Yes.
How's it getting in?
It seems to be sheet flowing from the east over the soccer complex and south of that through the FPNL easement. Staff has been looking at that.
That's not, that's not allowed.
I mean, I remember when I came through after the hurricane, you could see sheet flow, water coming from, from that side, almost flowing into the parking lot.
That's not supposed to be.
And from the back.
Can I touch on this?
Sure.
So this discussion started prior to the storm, and so... And so we are sitting down to, every week we meet with Tetra Tech. And this is one of a high priority issues to sit down with South Florida. There's a lot of players because this is a widespread issue. So we are, Steven is coordinating and Keith are coordinating a meeting with South Florida to see how we can address this, but we are looking at all of our plans and maps and permit modifications and overtime that were approved. But from a staff perspective, we're on top of this one because it's a huge issue.
That entire 30 CFS, which was allowed off of that site was to come across and sheet flow directly over into what I call the Worthington property. There wouldn't be supposed to be anything going any other direction. We asked for it to be split 50 50 so for some of it to come through Magnolia. And they didn't want to do it. South Florida didn't want to do it. So my deal is if they didn't want to do it then, and they liked the water going south, then by God, keep it going south and not have it coming in another direction.
Right.
It, it came our way regardless. And so that's what I, I didn't have a question though. Are all the ponds on Timber Creek completed?
No, I think we brought that up. There was something that still aren't completed yet.
Because I do border the community and that's what my concern was right before the hurricane.
So they don't have enough storage.
So they don't have enough storage and they raised elevation.
There's seven or eight ponds today that are constructed, correct?
And it's about double that what the original plans. So like directly behind Magnolia Lake, they, it's, you know, the elevation is much higher and all that water was flowing, not only to you guys, it was flowing to this property and going to that pond, which then goes to Hampton Park. Coming to Magnolia and going behind Bristol Park. So.
Specifically did not want to happen.
So we asked it to come under, you know, through 83, but they said no, but it's still coming anyway and just over the.
South Florida did make a site visit. I think, was it right after the storm or before?
I think it went before the storm.
Before the storm. So this is on their radar. We're going to make sure it stays on their radar because this is not only impacting the school. We've had some, we have some washouts under the sidewalk. We have to make repairs to, the dog park's been out of, you know, commission since we've been inundated. So this is a top priority for staff.
It significantly impacts our storage capability.
Yeah, definitely.
Significantly, which means that if we have a storm event, we're going to have to lower that pond a lot quicker than we did the last time. We, we lucked out with Ian. It didn't have a, wasn't a big rainmaker.
Right.
But something that was preceded by a lot of rain, we could be in a world of hurt with this extra water because it has no place to go.
Yeah.
Okay. Long as somebody's looking at it.
I was just.
Yeah.
I was showing an aerial view, satellite view of the area. And there is significant number of ponds with significant size. So if they're already at control elevation, then.
Every drop, every drop comes to us. That's what it boils down to. They're in any storage.
Before the storm, there was a lot of flooding and it was sheet flowing visibly down soccer drive right out here. And we brought it up to the district and they reported back saying that they, they know that that it's an issue. They went out, did a site visit. They claimed that they couldn't see any of the water breaching over their berms, but L and Keith went out and they could see evidence where it had overtopped their perimeter berms. They also reported that some of their drainage pipes hadn't been installed yet. So they were digging swales to help move some of that water. And this was all before the storm.
Where that was at so that we can get a shot on the elevation to know what the elevation is versus the deal. That's critical.
Keith knows exactly where, where everything happened and they have a lot of photos and videos to document it.
So it sounds like we're, we're on top of it. Staff's on top of it, working with you guys. And so just, if we can add that as a watch item, Laura, put it on the, as a follow-up on the agenda management sheet.
I used to understand how that water goes northwesterly without a pump.
Yeah.
But that, their, their design didn't allow that. Some, there's an elevation off somewhere.
Right.
Steven, is that anything else from you?
That's it for me today.
Any additional questions to check?
Fred, I think is on the line. Do you have any questions for him? He might be. Yeah, I see him there.
I think we're good.
We're still on for the first meeting in November for the bond validations.
For the assessment, final assessment hearing, yes, November 3rd. Yes.
All right. Thank you. Good to see you. Moving on to administrative agenda items 11A. The fiscal year 2023 AECOM general CEI service contract. Is this a continuation of?
We have additional projects that we could utilize their services on that for oversight of some of the capital projects, road resurfacing sidewalks. And so we'd like to utilize their services for those capital projects.
I get several questions on this.
Go ahead.
This table A, well, first of all, this, this is purely for inspection services, correct?
Yes.
Purely inspection. I'm trying to figure this tab, table A. It looks like we're doing, are these spot road repairs?
Yes, sir.
Who's doing the designs on those?
They, we identified them last fiscal year. And so this is actually in tandem with the bond validation for what we planned on doing for this current fiscal year.
But has this been designed yet? This stuff, this stuff Tetra Tech's doing the design on?
No, sir.
Who's doing the design?
These are just patch repairs, basically where we're going in, cutting out the root damage area and putting back black base.
How are you bidding it without plans?
Scope, scope, it's scope. It's very simple, straightforward work.
No, no plans at all that we're bidding it on?
No plans.
No specs, no, no.
DOT specs.
Tabulation of costs?
Quantities.
Quantities? You're doing quantities?
Yes.
So somebody's putting something together.
We have it all quantified. Yes.
I'm sorry. Okay. But then 30, I just, the prices seem to be exorbitant for the amount of work. $15,000 for road repair inspection. What, what are they, what are they doing? How, how many, how many hours are we looking at?
Based on, it's based on the piggyback contract from the county that we used for the last fiscal year, which is a fixed rate of $100 per hour.
Well, I understand that, but I'm trying to figure out why 150 hours for point repairs. What, what are they, what are they doing? Are they, they're watching it full time?
Full time. Yes.
Full time inspection?
It's right. Yeah, it's in live tray on the county road. It, it needs to be inspected full time. Yeah.
And then the same thing on the sidewalk repairs, full time inspection?
Yes. Well, actually, those hours, those hours.
Inspection on sidewalks, you only need to be there twice.
Those hours were actually distributed because they had overlap in their work. If it actually works out that way, hopefully it will.
Well, I don't know what, what the lineal footage is of sidewalk repair, but my experience has been doing sidewalk work. There's two times you need to be there. And all torn out, the base is set. And then when they're doing the black doping, that's it. This seems like an awful lot of money for this work.
Well, we have a substantial amount of sidewalks and road repairs that need to be done.
Well, that's what it was asking the question. What are, what are we talking about here? How many linear feet of sidewalk are we doing?
Broken down. I can provide it to you if you'd like.
Because then when I look at the Pelican Reserve Road Resurfacing, which I would think would be a significant amount. Now, that's one I would can see where you want to have an engineer or an inspector there.
Yes. That's, that's only, that's only going to take a week.
20% of the sidewalk patch and the road patch. I, I had problems with that. But the big one was is that this is, that this, this agreement is only for inspection.
Yes, sir. And just for staff, I do want to make sure that we have somewhat of a policy in place for sidewalk repair, just in light of.
Yes.
You know, previous conversations.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Is this, is this the sidewalk basically on Gateway Boulevard, south of Gateway Greens?
I believe.
This is sidewalk. It's spread out.
Turn the mic.
It's, it's, it's all over?
Yes, sir. Yeah, it's all where.
Because we just finished going north. Are, are we taking this south or is it go all the way up to Stony Brook or?
I'll look at the map, but it's, it's all over the place though. There were other areas that were identified from the root damage. Yeah.
Cause there, there's tons of root damage.
Well, let me ask you too.
Go ahead. This is just root damage repair?
Correct.
Okay. And then I know this is not for now, but I might as well touch it since the sidewalk. Were you able to enter all the requests for the repair with the county on the sidewalks that is not like in front of Silver Lakes? That's.
Yes.
Horrific. Okay.
Well, that's what, but they're, they're now.
Oh, I, I figured now. I mean, starting asking this in February. So, but yeah, as long as they're done, you know.
There's another part of this. I hate to do this and then turn around and come back and tear it up. That, that's what they used to do up north. You, you pave a street and then you come back in and you cut a hole in it to fix a manhole or something. I don't want to do that. We've got an issue on these cart paths. And we know that the county has already made it clear that these car paths, these paths need to be eight feet wide. When we're doing this, I, we've got an opportunity to make them eight feet wide. If they're not eight feet wide. Are we looking at that to address that at this point in time?
No, as we have not received comments back from the county with regards to their stance on this.
And then also it wouldn't necessarily go into Stony Brook makes sense because you don't even have the five feet between the road. So making it, making it eight feet wide would be just a waste of money because they would still not be able to utilize that for that reason.
We, we've got a problem. I, I don't know how you get from Stony Brook, south of Hidden Lakes. Cause you can't meet the five foot separation from the road. But that was only something that they put out preliminarily as a discussion point. Perhaps their arm could be twisted to have something less than that where it's physically impossible to meet the five foot requirement. Otherwise you're not going to be able to go from the north end of this community to south end. It's impossible.
Well, same thing in Griffin. It's a foot.
Yep, there's several places.
In Griffin, it's literally a foot. Like they can't even use a mower. They just edge.
We need an answer on this from.
Should we hold the decision off on doing this? Till we get a decision on the eight foot, five foot?
And I think there's a letter for the chairman to sign today.
Yes.
To go out to the county, to go to Randy and copy to the county attorney's office with regards to the board asking that repeat a study performed.
Regardless, we have repairs that need to be made. And that we're responsible, we're responsible for, I mean, the road for sure needs to get done.
Somebody can get hurt.
Is there, Tony, if I'm in the agreement, is there stipulations and change in scope?
Like you can approve it as a not to exceed amount. And then we dictate.
And then you.
We dictate when and where.
Or you mean the scope of services?
Scope of services.
From beyond this, they would just modify. I think we could just do a change order to this agreement. You're saying there was table A to expand it to some other service?
I think they're concerned about reducing or expanding.
I'm saying if scope changes, you know, I want to make sure this is a contract of.
See what the dollar value is. What, what's the total cost of this?
Forty five, five.
That's the inspection. That's just the inspection. I'm talking about the actual work. What's the total dollar value that's going to come into play with the change order? Have we got bids on this work or price estimates?
We are working on it. We have, we have a few now already. We have some in here.
Ballpark. What are we looking at? The total of this $45,000?
For the work itself, the road repairs are right around, I think, I guess between the two road and sidewalk, we're, we're over $100,000. Yeah. I believe it's in this. It's.
But I guess for clarification, this is for, it's an annual amount. It's annual. It's, it's a, it's a year.
Yes.
It's worth of hours and time. That's what's anticipated for this type of inspection work. If you want to.
Typically inspection works four, four and a half percent. The total construction cost would be your inspection fee. So that would tell me that 25 times this, you'd be up around what? A million dollars. Something, something doesn't add up here. Doesn't add up.
Well, if the board wishes not to approve this item, we can table it till next.
Again, this is the maximum amount is what it is.
Yes, and not to exceed them out.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with the engagement, just knowing that we may have some scope.
I'm not worried about this. I'm more worried about what's the construction cost of all this.
It's in the, it's in the memorandum. It's, right now we've only received one quote for the road repairs and one for the path repairs. I have two other quote, quote requests out right now. The road repairs was 35,003 17. The path repairs was 137,352.
Is this project with the engineering outfit, AECOM, is it?
AECOM.
AECOM. Something that's outside the scope of the district engineer, Tetra Tech? Did they not want it or particular expertise or?
Last time we requested their assistance on CEI, they didn't have the staffing availability.
Okay. And we assume that that's still, okay.
All right.
Especially with a hurricane and them assisting the state right now.
Very good.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So do I have a motion to approve 11A?
I thought we were gonna wait.
No.
No, we're gonna go with this. I'd not exceed 45, four.
Yeah, I, I agree with Chelsea. It, it's dangerous out there. Somebody's going to sue us if they trip over these, these humps in the.
I misunderstood your comment, Mr. Tinkle. Sorry.
I'm just concerned about what the, the cost is as a ratio of the inspection. I don't like to see the inspection fee being 20% of the cost of the project. Something is wrong. That's way, 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 way high. But let's see what it is.
So let's, the motion would be to approve fiscal year 2023 AECOM general CEI service contract with an NT of 45, four. 45,000.
So move.
Second, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. Utilities department. Eleven B, 22 for Transit Connect acquisition.
So in the middle of Hurricane Ian, we had what staff like to call the fuel donkey, which was the F-150 that held the fuel. It died. And so this, it sends, we've moved the fuel to a different vehicle and the F-150 is what Denise was driving. This will be replacing that F-150 and then approval of auctioning off the unwork, not working F-150 to help offset some of these costs.
Does this have a fuel tank on it?
No, the transit would not. We've moved that fuel to a different, we're looking at an alternative. So we're not stuck in that same predicament.
Yeah. And part of the resolution would be adoption of resolution 2023 dash 07, using the usual template declaring the surplus.
I'll make the motion first for the approval on the 2022 four.
I'll second your motion.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, the reason that we're changing or getting the transit is because the costs of repairing the other vehicle, the older vehicles.
Yes.
Is getting quite expensive. And yet I looked in the budget, the O1 budget on vehicle maintenance and that's only $3,100.
That's, that's the 27% share of vehicle maintenance. That's one of those that's shared across the board. The layout of the Transit Connect is also much better for the metering department, which is where Denise works. It gives them the capability to keep all of their inventory inside in a covered space. So when they go on the field, they can just hop in there in the van and everything they need is in there. It's covered. It's safe. It's protected from the elements as well.
Well, in all honesty, I mean, I, I know we can make a case for it, but I'm also looking at.
Between, I would say roughly 15 to $1,900 every time that truck has gone in. And in the last six weeks, I believe it's been in the shop three times.
This is a budgeted expenditure for 2023.
Yes.
So this one is.
We're buying a lot of vehicles. That's all I know. We. You know, in the last year, is what the third one, fourth one, how many?
This one actually isn't. This is in the utilities budget for fiscal 23.
Well, whatever, but we're just buying a lot of vehicles. And if they're absolutely positively needed and we can't defer it, but in the current economic climate, getting reservations about possibly buying new equipment.
Well, what do we have before? Three vehicles and one we started?
Six this year though.
Well, I think because we had hardly none.
Right.
We had three, like I, I remember times that I had to meet with residents and with staff. We had to wait here 20 minutes until a truck came in so we can go and meet residents. So the problem is that we didn't have it for so long. So I don't disagree that it's a lot now because we're catching up. But I don't, I, from a financial standpoint, don't feel that it's fiscally responsible for us to keep maintaining the vehicle that we're replacing because we are, it's a 2012. It's got 120,000 miles on it. It's consistently in the shop. It's a diesel. So it's just, it's not fiscally responsible for us to maintain it. And we did budget to replace it this year.
And is this similar to the other transit?
It's exactly like the other transit. Yep. So both Denise and.
It becomes more multifunctional.
They would have, yeah, they would have the same vehicles.
Okay. I will call a vote. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed?
And motion includes the adoption of resolution 2023 dash 07.
I'll make that motion.
Discaring surplus.
Yeah, for, for the surplus.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Moving on, 11C. Resolution 2022 of dash O2 adopting revised committee meeting protocol.
Tony, you want to take this one?
Yes, and the board had adopted some protocols and meeting procedures for committees. And the authorized subcommittees. And with the conversations concerning P pack and subcommittees, it was decided there might be, need to be some revisions to this protocol.
What was the red lines on these? I was trying.
There wasn't. This is a clean version.
What, but what, what, what was it? Because I want to go sit there and do this back and forth.
Changed or modified.
Yeah, what was changed?
Not that much. I think we, we, we sort of cleaned up some redundant language and other provisions. I don't have that, our internal red line draft with me. But I think that the primary issue is with regards to we But I think that the primary issue is with regards to we, uh, meeting location, we clarified. We had before as to when the, the meeting may be held at another location within the district.
I didn't see anything.
Other than uh at this office, uh, meetings need to be here. And any meetings outside this meeting room need to be open and accessible to the public. And except in extraordinary circumstances, the subcommittee or committee would have to come to this board to ask for a different location. For example, there's been discussion of having some P-PAC meetings up in the town center or the Carol Brockey Center. And that would then need to come to this board to approve those to occur if that was to take, take.
Yeah, but I mean, on a meeting by meeting basis, because I think we're thinking in terms of this various subcommittees of P-PAC meeting routinely in the community to get better community response. And I would not want those committees to have to come here every time they want to hold a meeting.
You're going to defeat the purpose.
Yeah, I mean, let's, so I, that, I highlighted that the advanced approval of location for the board of supervision. I think if we meet with staff and they, that ought to be enough of an approval for us. That's what I'd like. Cause they'll see the location, they'll see the facilities. We don't need to wait to come back over here to do it. So I'd like to strike that particular.
Well.
Could we just add that? Or add the Pelican Preserve meetings will be held at that particular.
Can be, not must be.
Yeah, they can be.
Or, or it could be, uh, that, that advance approval, that the location must be open and accessible. Keep that. And that coordination.
No problem with that.
Yeah, and that I, I, I would see. Recognizing the focus of that discussion was about P-PAC meeting in Pelican Reserve. I don't want to have it to open that it would be considered that you can meet outside the district. I think that's the important consideration generally. You're meeting within the confines or boundaries of the district. So I guess we can just say that the location must be open and accessible to the public within the boundaries of the district. And then uh that uh see uh which, and, and then, yeah, just must be open and accessible. Public is outlined in, uh, within the boundaries of the district.
That satisfies you then?
And, and what we may want to say, um, at the first part, it's a meeting shall be held at district offices. Right, following circumstances, open accessible, uh, upon coordination with district management.
That's fine. I can't see. Problem with that. I mean, we're all.
And then except as otherwise, and then other, cause I'm thinking of extraordinary circumstance, like you saw the various towns and villages that had their main buildings decimated. You know, Sanibel.
The default is here.
Yes.
Unless pre-approved or authorized alternate locations.
And I'll, I'll make those changes then. Provide that flexibility.
I'd, I'd make the motion to approve twenty twenty-three oh two with those revisions.
Yeah, and the rest of it were just cleanups. I think Chelsea had some.
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Uh, all in favor? Any opposed? Great. Moving on to eleven D, uh, the Gateway and St. Row eighty-two medium program. Um, looking at the quotes on this.
I, I looked at this. Well, first of all, I'd like to seen samples or something of this. I had to go on Google.
Easy, easy grass. I had to Google.
No idea of what this was, but when I looked at it and saw that Miami-based firm over there. And alls I could see was these billion-dollar houses that have it around the house for like a golf course. I thought, give me a break. Is this nothing more than what we used, uh, Stephen, if you recall, when we were doing the lake banks? We had those moles that were had about four or five inches high and we put the dirt and the stone inside. And only this case, we're just playing, are we planting actual grass turf or are we putting in fake grass?
It looked like turf because it looked like little squares of like tiles.
I thought it was real grass, but I, I couldn't tell.
Well, at the end of the day, a couple, in my opinion, I think we keep existing vegetation there that's not causing any issues. One, it's going to reduce the amount of ground coverage that's needed. And is there a simpler way to, uh, to solve this problem? I mean.
You didn't like two hundred fifty, two hundred ninety-five thousand dollars?
And that's right in front of my community. So I'd like for it to be nice, but at the same time, I mean.
Well, there's no doubt in my mind. It, it is nice and I could go along with the long-term maintenance deal. That's probably true. The only issue I had is, is that is the grass real?
No, it's all synthetic.
It's all synthetic. So then I go back and I, I air or uh bring up also like Kathleen said, is that where did the water go?
They claim it's one hundred percent permeable.
One hundred percent permeable? And I saw him on the picture, on the video of putting in compacted sand?
Right.
Those two things don't add up. When you compact sand, that's going to be like concrete.
Well, but how much? I mean, that's.
I was watching the video that showed how they did this.
Look at the square footage there. It's not a whole lot.
Eight feet wide and what, three, four hundred yards long?
I just think there's got to be a simpler.
Why can't we just put the, you know, the, the, the grass that we transplanted from eighty-two and Griffin? The green la- liriope grass, is that what it is? Yeah, that, that is zero maintenance. They don't, if you plant that from the exor to both sides. Mainscape doesn't need to go trim it. They don't really need to thin out because I can tell you, they haven't been thin out for twenty years over here and they look just fine. It, it's like a really short little grass. No, it, it's a, it's a ornamental grass. Yeah, it's not a paint, it's not that, not that bright orange that gets really big, the pendants. It's, it's very little, it has tiny little purple flowers. But it does not grow taller than this. And it was full.
What is the proposal basically that's, there wasn't a map with the plan of this first, first team? Are we intending of putting this between the trees essentially? And then everything else just comes out and the soil would be scooped to be top of curb to top of curb? And this would just be flush?
Correct. And then there'd be some kind of border at the palms, at the big royals.
Something like a, maybe those concrete ribbon deals, like a collar.
Kathleen, is this the item you were talking about?
Yeah.
So this is, this is what liriope grass looks like.
No, I meant, but this topic.
I would keep the exoris here and then put this grass here. And there is no maintenance, hardly any. Three times a year tops on maintenance on this. Do you agree or you disagree?
Do we have a quote on this one?
No, I just keep that in my head right now.
But, but this is the topic that Stony Brook's.
Yeah.
Was not consulted about in advance.
And, and because there's, you've got palms, uh, you've got, I can't, I don't know what kind of hedge it is. And then you've got dwarf exoras.
You got cocoa plum. You got cocoa plum and exoras.
And exoras. And then there's a hedge. Now, I will say that dwarf exoras are very low maintenance. However, I do think a couple were. We have to see how they're going to bounce back from the storm because some of them don't look that great, but you know, we'll have to see.
Could we defer this topic?
I think we should.
Concurrents from Stony Brook.
And, and for us to continue to look at options. What we're looking at because I think. You've got liriope, you've got a couple of different varieties of liriope. Cause I actually have a border around my house with liriope.
So if we do liriope. Yeah, and if you do liriope, I, I can tell you, it's already what's.
I, I would just like to defer this back to Stony Brook.
But that's fine. But if we decide that that's what we want to do, it's going to mimic Griffin and eighty-two because that's what you did there. So if it was good enough, I mean, granted.
Kick this back. And I appreciate the diligence from staff. And sometimes we have to, you know, go back to the drawing board a couple of times.
So this, you are pushing to the Stony Brook Advisory Committee?
Further input.
I think it would probably make sense.
Well, they, I mean, they are your advisory committee.
I, I'd love to get a recommendation from Stony Brook Advisory Committee because they're, you know.
Okay.
You know, it's, it's in their jurisdiction and they can work along with staff.
Yeah, it's their front.
Well, it is outside because it, it is, it is a district. I'm just want to make sure we're clear, like it is outside of their stuff. But, but I, I don't disagree. And in simultaneity, I will think you could go and get a, an estimate from Mainscape to do that.
Yeah, can I just get some clarification from you on what your intent was? The, the ropey grass completely and remove everything else but the palms.
No, I would keep, I would keep the exoris, maybe remove five or six that they look like they're declining. Replant those and then.
And the nice thing about liriope and the, and the different, because I have one that doesn't, doesn't bloom quite as much. And it's, it's a darker green. I almost use it as a border. And I've seen it used as kind of like a border because it will, it will spread. Uh, and then it provides pretty good ground, ground coverage. So you could almost border on the outside and what is in the middle.
Yeah, but, but, but the price.
We're not going to price, but the appearance is great.
That would be great for a roundabout.
So we will.
When I first read this, that's exactly what I thought we were talking about, what this is going on the roundabout.
Would definitely be a point of consideration.
So we will take this um with the comments that were provided today back to Stony Brook Advisory Committee and request for their recommendation moving forward.
Yeah, that's what I would say.
Well, all of these prices came in and were salted, immensely salted.
And again, I think if we. Then, because it is considered pilot, if it doesn't work, I mean, throwaway cost is minimal. As opposed to, you know, we do something more expensive and you can't walk that back.
It's not a hundred thousand dollar throwaway.
A, a thing of liriope is two dollars.
Okay.
All right, we have our direction.
And Kathleen, if, if you'll warn, if, if you will, um, as, as the advisory committee looks into this. Be great if you maybe pull some residents from Stony Brook that have some experience in landscaping. Kathleen would be a good one to.
The Stony Brook Advisory Committee, just like this one, is open to the public that anybody.
They can go in common. Yeah.
Okay, perfect. So we're going to table item eleven D, uh, district manager items.
Yes.
Eleven D is a dog.
Eleven D is a dog, yeah.
You want to take?
Sure. Um, this, the admin report, uh, we've been busy outside of hurricane things, doing our best to try to keep things moving along and get back on track. Uh, bond validation, uh, as you know, the meeting was continued and the public hearing will happen at our next board meeting on November third. Um, casella pavers, I, um, uh, Pelican, okay, sorry.
Just generally, these, the, again, these monthly reports are from the past month, not things that have occurred in the last week. Um, you'll see that updates your, the October monthly report at your November meeting. If there's any particular questions for the admin one, uh, we'll be more than happy to take those. And we do have our two directors here, um, for their reports as well.
One question I just noticed it before I came over on uh Gateway Next Door. They're, they're picking on you, not me for once. Uh, the issue was is that somebody immediately was new from, I'm going to say either Daniels of Timber Ridge. Was looking for, how did they get into the, the dog park? How did they get a license? They said they called in and nobody would return their calls. So we might want to, might indicate that the location's over on Fairway Office Park to, to get the, uh.
Okay.
Deal.
We'll reiterate that.
That's the only thing I saw.
And just speaking of the dog park, there's, is there still limbs and stuff down back there?
Water, is that what you said?
The uh small dog park, we're getting trees. All the trees that are downed are cut up and removed. There's two oaks that were fallen over. We're going to attempt to save and stake. Okay, great. And my only reason I, someone had, had concerns that the longer that that debris stays on that grass that we just reinstalled. Our goal is Monday.
I had somebody complaining over there about the dog parks. I drove over there, this was about two weeks ago. I went over and looked at it. Uh, what, what, what are they talking about? It, I thought it looked in great shape. Was there something that occurred before then that was bad?
With the water.
That we have since fixed?
The talk, we talked about the water earlier coming on us from, from Timber Creek. That's what the problem was.
Cause I looked at it and I thought dog park looked pretty, pretty good.
We had the two weeks of, uh, big rainfall event prior to the storm.
That might have been.
That area has, again, because of that flow, that back parking lot and the dog park and that area in front of OAK. I mean, it could be underwater.
Timber Creek water.
This is prior hurricane. We're talking, you know, a couple inches.
I have a little honeydew list that, um, I'd just like to touch on. The county, the bids are due for, um, to the county for the roundabout tomorrow. Um, and so our portion of that uh ITB will need to be approved at one of your November meetings. So, um, that's the Griffin and Gateway Roundabout. So that'll be forthcoming. Um, we got notice that mosquito control, um, will be out all, doing all of Gateway Community north of Daniels from Rickenbacher Parkway to eighty-two and from West Links East to Griffin. I believe that's tonight.
Are they doing aerial or are they doing a motor?
I did not ask.
No aerial this time.
You don't hear it.
This is truck this time around.
Um, so. Tonight.
Problem is like in the areas, in the areas we have like the golf course and other areas.
You can contact mosquito control and request those.
You'll get to it.
Um, so I just have a couple of, um, housekeeping things as we're working on the supplemental for the, um, bond. Um, I just want to, I want clarification as we're drafting this and it'll come back to you guys, um, as part of the whole bond process. Um, I just need to be clear about, uh, the pond allocation for the first series. That we want to push those dollars amount that were allocated for this first series to the second series. Understanding we have the facilities plan and design and we want to pursue SRF funding before we actually take out money. Um, that's the staff recommendation is to push any bond monies to the second series or a later series if needed, if we're unsuccessful with SRF funds. So I want clear guidance on that.
If we're unsuccessful.
If we're unsuccessful.
Have we heard anything, any update on SRF changing interest rate or terms?
We won't know until closer to the time of requesting those construction dollars. Um, but we are hopeful that we'll be able to get a large chunk from SRF. So I just, can I have clear guidance on that from the board?
SRF is our primary source.
Yes, that is our intent.
I don't have an issue with that.
I don't have an issue with that.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, I just, two, when it comes to the pool, um, if, I, I know this is a sensitive subject. There's a difference between taxable and non-taxable. And if the pool is not open to the public. That will affect the taxable or non-taxable bond.
Well, it is open to the public.
Outside, uh, to.
Our pools are open to the public, but there's a fee structure.
Only.
Okay, I thought we adopted.
Say that again.
The Gateway Commons Pool is open to Gateway residents only.
We not include the pool. Okay, I thought we did adopt.
So if, if you'd like to amend the V schedule at a later date and to offer it out to the public for a fee. That will, that will adjust, I mean, again, I just need to know if it's going to be public or not public.
If, if, what, what is the financial ramifications of the bond? What are we talking about?
Taxable versus non-taxable.
Yeah, what that does, that affects the interest rate.
Interest.
There's a different interest rate for taxable bond versus a tax exempt bond.
Probably higher.
But it's usually higher for the taxable bond.
Yes.
Because the income is taxable to the investor, the bondholders. And, and you, I mean, you can split bond series to do this. I mean, it's been, it's been done where you have a piece of a bond issuance, maybe twenty twenty-three A, this pick can be not taxable, to be non-taxable, twenty twenty-three B can be.
Why wouldn't we be able to take, uh, I know you'll find a reason not to, but why wouldn't we be able to take the, what is the differential in cost? Okay, the add-on, the net increase. And divide that by an estimated number of people who use it. And that's the fee.
Well, again, I, I just need to know. I just need direction.
Yeah, there's a rationale. We can talk with tax council and bond council. You know, you can have an appropriate rationale for why there is a differential for it. Because for, by way of example, you have the residents are paying for the ONM piece through, and they will pay it for the ONM piece through their non-nearest special assessments. So this, we're talking about a debt service piece and a, a continuing ONM piece. So that could be part of, we can talk with bond council, tax council, how you have that rate differential for residents.
I'm just trying to determine what is the dollar value impact of doing it, of not doing it. What's, what's our, what's our exposure?
What's the, what's the tax?
Five thousand dollars, ten thousand?
I don't know if you can identify that until Randy finds out in the market what the interest rates are.
Correct.
But by way of example, I, I can get the interest rates for you from when we just did the Stony Brook CDD. I, that was a recent bond issue in July. And they had two, two parts of it. One was taxable to do landscaping, roadway improvements and public infrastructure. Uh, that was the non-taxable piece. Excuse me. The taxable piece was to acquire the clubhouse for Duffy's. Because there's a current tenant, which is, you know, being leased. So I can give you those rates. You can just, for example, I can show you that doc, those documents, you could see the rate differential for.
And one thing we may want, we may want to consider along with this, if we are looking at, uh, a fee schedule for the pool. Is we might include one that's specific pool only. And then one that is a, um, let's just call it a greater gateway amenities. You know, which would really be like the soccer field use and the, you know, parks. Um, so you could do a full complete.
But we already have that except.
No, we, for leagues, league use.
No, we have for the dog park. There's two different fees.
Yeah, the, for single, for use. But I'm saying like if, and here's the problem that we're trying to solve. A lot of the usage that we see outside of permitted use is per individual.
Okay.
So if, if a, if a team or a league wants to come. So if, if a, if a team or a league wants to come in, there's a fee schedule for that. But the problem that we're running into is individuals en masse, uh, utilizing the fields and, and what we say is you have to have a permit or you have to have whatever. And, and that, it doesn't give, you know, just, it doesn't give users an, an option. So it would give us better, I think, ability to regulate saying, you, you can absolutely use these amenities if you, uh, whatever, like the, a social membership versus a golf membership.
I have a question. We do charge, uh, a, a regular resident a fee. Like if I just want to go in and use a soccer field and have a team of twenty-two.
An event, single use event, yes.
I can go in and do it. And there is no superlative of, of like, I can only do X amount per month. So it's not necessarily single because I can go in every week and as long as the schedule is open, I can make it a weekly thing.
But the problem, no one's, no one's going to do that, like.
I don't mean to word digressing.
So it's just something to consider.
I, I just need to know if you want to have it open to the pool or not, or have that open to the public or not. That's all I need to know.
Well, we can't make that determination.
Without the class.
The taxable, the difference between the taxable.
And, and again, what, any, any, uh, discussion on that will all be conceptual, not hard and fast, because again, the market's trying to say that. But again, I, and Rhonda.
This is the ballpark.
Rhonda can give some examples. I'll give you the more recent example of Stony Brook. You can see the rates that were different for the two bonds.
And then the last thing with this bond discussion, just because we're trying to go through it, is, um, the street light pole project, um, about if we were to consider, I know FPL has kind of been inundated.
They're not doing nothing right now.
They're not tou- touching any street light poles. Is to allocate some of that funding as if we were moving towards an FPL system. Um, otherwise.
That would be my recommendation.
Where, where did we have that in our, uh, uh, timeline?
Early on, it's for a series and that's why I'm trying to get some direction on how we should proceed.
And, and they're making a presentation at the November meeting?
I don't.
We haven't heard.
They, he called me the other day and Eric is at ground zero on Fort Myers Beach, so it's going to be months.
Yeah, I've, I've been talking with, uh, Jamie and on doing the upgrade to the LEDs and he just said it's real easy. It's been pushed back.
Yeah, exactly.
We just got, yeah, I just talked to him too. We just got back in the office. Cause I, for budget reason, I needed to know.
Yeah.
He's out there like fifteen, sixteen days in a row.
Is anyone opposed to at least moving forward with the assumption that that is a viable direction that we could possibly take?
That would be the, to me, the perfect reason of doing it.
Okay. Okay. Uh, I think that's all I have for now, Laura.
Do you want the, do you want to just pull up future poor business and then what you're going with?
Well, we have the other two directors with their monthly reports, if you have any questions. We have utilities and public works here. We want to, who's this? Keith. Keith, if you want to just come up and touch on this item about the soccer drive.
So I know there's a lot of history from what I gather out there on the soccer fields, but, um, in the past, there was a couple quotes received to keep, this is basically to keep the people from parking on the shoulder on soccer drive. Right now, the teams are putting up caution tape when they have, uh, when they have their events and their games going on. It seems to be working somewhat well. But there was a couple old quotes here received to put up, um, a hedge and then another one with to put up a fence and kind of just, uh, keep it, keep it, uh, the fence would be one foot off the edge of pavement, which I don't necessarily, that's a good idea for clear zone requirements. So, uh, right now, we just kind of recommend not to do anything at this point because it seems to be working okay.
I think we have to do something, um, in the long term. I, yes, I mean, it's not something we have to do immediately, but I think when I say over the next six months, it's.
Six months.
We, we should.
Parking in the grass.
Parking in the grass.
I think it should be a bigger picture, you know, parking has been an issue since, from my understanding, since the park was first put in. So we either need to look at expanding parking towards the back of the lot and look at a bigger picture solution instead of a short interim solution that may be costly upfront. So this is just, again, we're reporting back from items that were previously discussed at the board level. We looked into it. It's not feasible. We'd like to take a step, a step back and look at the bigger picture and come back with a future plan.
Fifteen, you know, so that's like twenty, twenty K for a hedge solution because you got to do irrigation and hedging, right? To me, that's not, I mean.
What's the number of cars you could get if you simply paved it?
If we paved it?
Yeah. How many cars can, spaces can.
He did that count.
Paved which side?
Yeah.
I just. This is the right-hand side where the berm is, so.
That's why we're having a problem, so we can do that.
What are they doing, driving up on the?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're driving up. And so you can't, the, the, the concern has been.
What if, what about?
You can't see it now.
What about Kikina?
That was, uh, I actually worked up, um, I was going to get cost estimates to do fif- like a fifty-seven stone gravel.
Fifty-seven or Kikina.
With a, with like a railroad tie border up against the top slope, just, and let them have at it basically.
Contact Timber Creek, get some freelance.
I would say overall, I, I wouldn't recommend doing that until you get past our entrance because just for cosmetic reasons.
What about drainage?
Drainage, it would be self.
No issue.
No issue, no.
Cause you, 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 you'd be able to have gravity swale.
Right.
Toward the slope.
Correct, yeah.
Then that's where I'd go.
It would, um, it would be pretty cost effective too. Uh, so I could get some.
Maintenance is, maintenance is a lot cheaper too.
The only, the only issue I see with that is it's not a real regulated parking spaces and you could get somebody pulling in straight, sticking out in the road, some guy's going to pull in at an angle.
That's what a sign's for.
Yeah.
I said, right now, is the soccer league observing the extra fee for the detail?
We have held off on that. Um, we had some pushback from them. We haven't had, from my understanding, a lot of issues out here, or at least that haven't been reported. And so as long as they can self-contain, um, that's where we stand.
Okay, so I have two questions. Who's, who is the person that you're expecting to report?
The leagues and then we have staff that pop out randomly.
So we can expect the leagues to tell us, hey, we're violating what you asked us and please, I mean, that, I mean, to me.
And I'm out there probably.
I, 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 I see it. I mean, I can tell you it's definitely better. I think there is still an opportunity for the, uh, it gets worse around seven from some reason. And it's, that's when I ask, what time does he leave? Because they, once the police officers are there, there's a few and, and it's right by the front, but as soon as he leaves, they literally go back and they move their cars closer and I don't know if it's to carry their chairs and stuff like that. So to me, if you're expecting the leagues to report that they were parking there so you can charge them, that's not going to happen. And if the staff is not really looking at, at those times because they are not here, then we're not having an extra.
Keith, how many spots do you get if we would do that? Twenty, thirty?
If everybody parked, you know, like they were supposed to, you could probably get twenty, thirty cars in there. On the right-hand side? Yeah. The left-hand side.
Does that help?
It doesn't solve.
It doesn't solve. I agree with you though.
The, the problem is not necessarily, well, parking is an issue. But you, anytime you park on that side, especially the way they're doing it dead and backing in, but even if you regulate it, you've got to cross that road. And during peak times, you've got kids, you're talking about little kids running across that road. So the best thing to do is to eliminate parking on that side. You know, put a hedge or, or whatever you want to do to eliminate it because there's not a whole lot of room. And that's why most people don't park this way. They back in or, you know, an angle. And that's where you're trying to back out. Your camera's pointing straight to the ground. You can't even see if someone's back there and it's dark along that road. Cause we don't have any, you know, there's no lighting along that drive on the, on that.
So, so if you block that off with a hedge, where, where do you supplement the parking then?
Well.
On the backside?
What the league should be doing is there, we've had a longstanding agreement with the school, so there's adequate parking at the school. And the leagues have socialized that in the past, but certain times they may not promote it quite as much because you have, you got to tell someone or, or more importantly, there's no deterrent today. I mean, well, there is today because.
Cause they got alternatives.
There's alternatives, you know, so all it takes is one person to pull in on that slope and then you've got fifty. So if we eliminate that, then there is no other alternative to either, uh, than to park at the school or we probably need to be looking at addressing, uh, parking in the future, both for dog park and, and for you. So, I mean, to me, I think from a liability perspective, it's worth dropping twenty grand to put a hedge up. We take that twenty grand and we amortize it over the leagues for X amount of years and make them pay for it.
Well. I, I, I. We can't get them to pay for the sheriff's details, so.
Well, but that's me.
Anyway, we wanted to report back on this. We can look at the cost of smuro ties and smur, not riprap, um, fifty-seven stone. Jeez, please. That'll deter them. And bring a call, bring back this cost comparison of the, the hedge and, I mean, ultimately the hedge is going to have long-term costs because maintenance and trimming and things like that. But, um, we can look at it a little deeper and come back.
Yeah, sounds good. And did, uh, Kenny, did you have anything from a utilities perspective? No? Okay. Um, do you want to just go quickly to, to the agenda management and then we can wrap up with Tony?
Well, I got one comment before we do that. The report on our finances, the Gateway Services Community Development District Treasurer's report, uh, I had a conversation with, uh, Stephen Bloom because I noticed that, uh, we had four million dollars in a money market account, ICS, that was giving us a point zero five return. And in light of today's escalating, uh, interest rates and things, I think we could do better than that. So he said he is going to come back to us with a ladder and a recommendation on do that because we ought to be getting some money for it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Point zero five, you mean five percent or five tenths of a percent?
Oh, if it's five percent, we'd be happy.
I like point oh five, but point oh oh five is not good.
Put my visa on that zero five.
Okay.
Management, this is, and I'm really glad we've started instituting this because it's at line sight for the future. This is a great opportunity for us to look and see what, what is, um, on the docket for future, uh, board agendas. This is a great opportunity if anyone has an item, either for, uh, uh, for continued tracking or for agenda consideration. This is where we would want to bring that up and, and, uh, and keep track of there, so.
Any items that they would like staff to be working on right now? Cause we have a, we are, our plate is full, but it can grow a little bit more if needed.
In addition to what we've already talked about.
Yes. Yeah, Thanksgiving plotter.
I don't have any.
I don't have anything.
No?
Is there anything that you see on here that you'd like to see move up in priority? These are just things that we've kind of like, especially with the TBDs are ticklers for reminders for both staff and you all to see that, hey, these things are forthcoming. We've got to start to get them on our radar. We've either got deadlines with them or things that we've been working on to consider in the future.
I mean, the only thing that I have, I would like to see some progression on the actual development of the committees.
That'll, that will happen with.
I've had people want to serve on committees and are asking, what, what are we doing?
It's, I was gonna, did anybody sign up? Because I know it's online and I knew this.
For the.
To join, join a committee because you have a link for just join.
Well, as of right now, we have Pelican Preserve Advisory Committee, Stony Brook Advisory Committee, and then you guys established.
Do we have a park committee?
We do not. The board has to.
That's one I throw volunteers.
Well, if the board is interested in establishing a Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, then that's a discussion that the board needs to have. And then again, we'd have to look at the policies and procedures and then scope.
We haven't made a decision yet.
Well, I haven't even heard if the board is interested in one. So if you're, if there's two or more members here that are interested in discussing that, we can bring that back at a future board meeting, um, for a discussion.
Yeah, so I'd say if you have any recommendations, you know, for a committee, I know we had passed around like maybe two or three, um, I think we're three that we defined. But let's, I mean, maybe we want to start with one.
Okay, so, sorry. The reason why I'm confused is because, you know, if you actually go into the district's website and it says, click here to apply for a link, you click on it and it's pictures. So my, because I didn't go through the process, my understanding is that you had get involved, join an advisory committee or subcommittee today and you could do that, but when you click on it and you get pictures. So that's what I was going to ask. Did anybody sign up for anything?
Yeah, we've had, for the Pelican Preserve subcommittees, we've had, um, people apply for some of those.
Through our site or just through independent?
Not through our site because it doesn't let you.
Oh, it's.
Right now, it's going out.
Once you click on it, you'll sign up, this is what you get.
You get that picture?
Yeah.
Okay, well, we'll work.
But we don't have any committees for any gateway opportunities.
Pelican's been doing this for a number of years.
You probably got a line over there.
The, the only other thing I saw and keep hammering on is because I hear it every day, is this golf cart deal. We got it, we got to get an answer what we're doing on this golf cart policy.
Tony, you just want to touch on that real quick with the letter.
Yeah, we had a letter again, ready for the chairman's signature to go to Randy, copy to the, uh.
Randy Cerchi.
Randy Cerchi and also go to the chairman Cecil and also to the county attorney's office, deputy county attorney Andrea Fraser. So that's where we'll go to cover all the bases for the departments. And I know they got, they have their hands full too, so hopefully we get, but Randy's good about being nudged. He doesn't mind. My only other comment is on, uh, in the November meeting, we've got amendment for Pelican Reserve O and M agreement and I don't think we're anywhere near ready for that yet. I know we're working that way, but I don't think that, that.
Agreed. We're going to push that one out. We're, we're nowhere.
Don't want to push it forever. It's got to be done. We want to do it.
Well, that's a good, that, this is a perfect example of, hey, we, we have this on our tickler, board's input, we think we need to delay this. Absolutely, this is the time to do that. So we will move that down.
Just to November or to December.
Yep.
Who's our contractor doing the, uh, uh, cross-country road? The FPL road, who's, who's the contractor?
PMI.
PMI?
Yes.
And Chelsea, just like item eight, agenda management, what's that placeholder for?
Oh, that's this. This, the document.
Maintaining the.
So we can remove that?
Yes.
Cause that's.
That's finished.
Hey, there you go. Check something off.
Won't that be on everyone, every meeting?
Will we always be talking to agenda management?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. This is just a recap of what, I understand what you're saying. I, I get it.
Yeah, okay. Uh, Tony, what do you, anything else?
Just the updates on some of those, uh, and then some conversations with, uh, John Gregg, Laura and Bob Gephardt with regards to some, uh, homework research involving landscape bufferings, landscape easements, irrigation, ownership, maintenance issues in Pelican Reserve. And my goal is to have a documented report using what Tetra Tech did before and my research pulling my boxes out of storage by the November PPAC meeting so they can review it and come back to the board with some recommendations and some clarification. Additionally, the Gulf Current Letter, uh, Hotwire, we sent the demand letter to Hotwire about a month ago. We've heard nothing back. We're going to follow up. They're the ones that hit a line subsurface, uh, boring.
Who was that?
It was about a year ago, didn't it hit it?
No, it was in Pelican over the summer.
Oh.
July.
And so that, that's out, that's out there. Uh, we have the deeds to the, recorded, or I think recorded, we recorded the deeds for the FPL easement lands. And we have the, uh, Palazzo Way deed's been recorded and we have the deed for OS four, I think, tract OS four, I'll double check. That's the, uh, the Prado piece, which is the, uh, other balance of emergency access road. And, um, working with staff on a number of other issues, if you have any questions about any of these updates, feel free to ask. The boring issue with Hotwire, what, what's the problem? I thought they stepped up and. Oh, Hotwire did not, no. They've never responded to our, our certified mail.
No, we had a, um, sanitary sewer line break that they, they directional board right through, um, in Pelican off of Arizo Way in the summer. Um, we had to make the necessary repairs, um, and.
That's a second.
Just repeating what Comcast did over in Gateway with the box.
Yeah, but this is even the first time they stepped right up on Pelican Reserve when they hit the sanitary. And I guess I didn't realize that they were.
It did not.
For the reason.
The locates for, I mean, locates right there, locate tickets, everything's marked, everything, so it's no excuse, but.
Clear and dry.
So. Clear, but, but we'll get some pushback. We always do and then they hem it off for a while and we'll see.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that it, Tony?
Yes, sir.
Great. So if there is nothing else.
You have supervisor comments and.
Supervisor comments, Sloppy.
Yeah, I've got a couple. Uh, I talked to Keith and let him know that I'd heard that, uh, I believe it's the last parcel across from the Boulevard Deli that it's Southern Homes. Rick Brolinski had mentioned to me that, uh, they've been authorized to start the design on that. So it'll be about, I'm going to guess somewhere between seventy-six and ninety-six, uh, units. That was back years ago. They were going to come in there with those little California townhouses. I guess they're going to be doing something very similar to that. So we need to be checking. That one's really no problem. Worthington, I guess we got the plans in for, we now call that Daniels.
Daniels Preserve Apartments.
Dennis Parkway.
Dennis Parkway.
Parkway, yeah. I'm really concerned now with the Timber Creek and drainage, where all this water is going to go because the fact that it's going the wrong direction, something is awry with elevations. Non-FEMA expenses, we talked about this earlier and it applies to other communities. Go online and see if you don't have insurance, can communities like within my community, several of the associations went and upfront before FEMA got here, did a lot of work like clearing and clearing the roads and that incurred costs five, ten, fifteen thousand dollars. They're wondering, can they get a reimbursed? They don't have insurance either. So we'll probably just do Gateway Master, Gateway Greens Master and see if that. So we'll probably just do Gateway Master, Gateway Greens Master and see if that deal will fly. If it doesn't, I mean, we're just out of the paperwork trying to do it. Last one, I'd just heard before I left to come over here that the voting has changed in the county. That your normal precincts have been changed to 12 locations throughout the county and you can go to any one of them to vote. For example, Gateway Greens all goes over to the church. The preacher the other day said that they're getting prepared and this guy that sent me this says the church not even on the list. So I've not seen anything nor heard anything that this is even going on, but there's going to be a lot of frustrated people when they can't find their polling place.
Just encourage, encourage folks to go to the supervisor of elections page. We don't want to give out misinformation here.
But has anybody heard that this is?
There, there is a lot of changes going on with precincts and stuff, especially with the islands being destroyed. So just go to the supervisor of elections page and you'll be able to find your precinct.
Yeah, that's real easy. It's, it's lead vote, lead dot vote. WWW dot lead dot vote.
Yeah, I think we shared the link on the, on Facebook page.
And I would continue to maybe tell Randy to post it closer to voting time.
We are.
Yeah, because they keep updating on their website. And that's, that's what I think that's what Chelsea was saying. They're the best source. They keep updating. They have a separate update provision on the lead vote website.
We just share, we're, we share information.
Is your point of contact with Solid Waste Management, Catherine?
No, no.
Okay, that's who, Mike. Who's your point of contact? Amanda?
Yes.
Okay. Catherine works for Amanda, I think. She must be a, your higher up. Okay. They've been good so far to work with. The fact they don't tell you where they're going.
Hey, I'm just happy they're picking it up.
When that, when that big black beast pulls into one of your streets and blocks the road, I hear about it.
City of Fort Myers is getting to Pelican, so.
And Bob, comments from you?
Oh, I have one communication item that I just want to throw out. Communication, communication occurs between our staff and entities within Pelican Reserve, be it the board or residents' lands or something else. I would like to have knowledge of those communications from my perspective as a board member so I know what's going on between the district and back and forth. Because I've seen a couple of emails recently, people have forwarded to me where a communication went out, but I wasn't included on it. So I'd like to, as a pro forma, just say, as a board member, if it affects the board and all, I'd like to be copied on it just routinely.
I have a little bit of an issue with that, only not because of the transparency, but I don't ask for any communication within Stony Brook that I get copied on. So I think we just have to.
It's your preference, right? I'm saying I would like to have it. Is there an issue?
So then my question is, are you asking for Pelican only, even though you're sitting at a.
Oh, no, I'm saying it out right now. That's an example, but.
Okay, because I, I just careful what we ask for because if you're sitting here in a Gateway board, then I would expect you to ask for Pelican and Gateway, which you're going to be overwhelmed.
Well, I, I understand that. But I am specifically focused on that one. But anything that's remain, am I the only one who has a problem with that? I mean.
I don't receive anything. I, I, but I don't ask. If a resident usually comes, this is how, it works well. If they have a resident, they reach out to me. I immediately forward that to Chelsea. And sometimes I copy Laura and I say, please, you know, there's this question. Keep, keep me, keep me informed because they reach out to me directly. But now if they reach out to Chelsea, I don't think I ever got anything saying, hey, this is what's going on.
You don't want to know that?
Not necessarily. If I, I think I'll be overwhelmed if I get the quantity of emails.
Here's.
That's just.
This is, and I understand where you're coming from and I'm not, but if, our position is to oversee Gateway. And it is included in that. If you want to be more in the weeds on what's going on in Pelican, I think that's an HOA or a PPAC type role. Now, if there are certain areas that you have, you know, maybe there's some type of interest that you may have. If there's a particular project or something that you've got involvement with, I think it's absolutely acceptable to ask for you to be included in that if you're participating. But I would say to blanket say, anything that goes out to Pelican, you need to be copied on. That's where I think, in my personal opinion, that's a little bit of a, I don't know what the word I'm looking for, but. I mean, I'm not saying, I'm, I'm saying it, I don't, the optics on it, I don't know.
Regardless of the outcome, I prefer a policy be implemented if that's how the board wishes to proceed. And it, or, or not. I just, if I have to CC every board member on every item that goes out, you guys are going to be inundated.
Well, that's.
Well, we can also opt out if we don't want. I mean, that's the other part. As long as it's available. If it's available for my review, then I'm fine. So that I at least know what the issues are. And it's no secret that there's been some contention with the, our board, our community associations. And there's correspondence going back and forth. And I need to be aware of that this is occurring. And I don't find out until three or four days later. So I'd like to have that remedy. And by CCing me on those things, and I can limit it to just the board for now. And it may go away in six months, but for right now, I'd like to be part of that.
Well, I, I would say maybe the recommendations, maybe if you sit down with, with Chelsea and kind of talk through, maybe you guys can come up with some.
Well, I did. Right now, it has to be a board issue.
So you mean like you're getting pushed back from getting information?
Yeah.
Do you, are you getting pushed back from information if you ask your HOA? Because.
I won't get anything from that. I will get nothing.
Then that's okay. Then you don't get nothing from anybody.
They're sending things over here without my knowledge.
Okay.
And that's what I don't want to have.
Oh, so then, so then maybe the question would be, anything that you receive from Pelican Preserve, Chelsea, would you be able to forward it to me? That's different.
Any response that goes out, that'll be fine.
Not response, any inquiries, anything that comes in.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. I mean, whatever you want.
I, again, would prefer that this be a written policy. So.
Okay, well, why don't we?
You got a draft one.
Why don't we take that and we'll put it on the agenda management as a, as a takeaway. And let's just think about how we would handle that. Because I, again, my position is, if we open that, then it's, why aren't we copied on every communication that's happened that goes back and forth and, and.
And maybe we should be, and then we can opt out of things we don't.
I don't think so. I think that extends, that's us getting into.
The operations.
But I agree with Chelsea. It needs to be a policy decision.
Okay. And we're supposed to be representing. Follow that up. Maybe there's a workshop we can, we can set up to discuss.
Okay. Oh, the second thing is I've had a couple of items and some of these are relatively minor where I've asked Tony to look at a particular easement, so to speak. Say the McAdam, they've been around Pelican Reserve Conservation Area 6. And then I find out that that would cost some money and it's not a lot, but there's no mechanism for the, the staff to authorize and fund that. So the premise came out that I would bring it up as an item here first at maybe PPAC. And then they would vote on it. And then it would come here. Well, hell, by the time you get through with all that, it's three months down the road. So I would like to establish with the board's approval, some kind of an annual fund that we each would have if we needed to have a special project followed up. Where maybe not to exceed $3,500 a year or something like that. But at least it would give, you know, a modest amount. I don't know how much, where we can get some follow-up on that as much quicker than waiting through the whole process.
Well, wouldn't, okay, so I'm just going to say what works for me because I had the issue with uneasement as well, FPL. When I get it from him, I send it to her and I say, I need an answer from Tony on this. Copy the whole board and the answer. So if you're, if you're trying to give direction to him, but then he needs an okay for it, then why don't we just give it to Chelsea?
Well, when I ask Chelsea for it, then we don't have a budget. Is that correct? That's the item? We don't have an approved budget. So then it's got to go through the process.
So.
So I'm trying to shorten the paperwork issue. That's all I'm trying to, not hide anything.
There, there's a couple of things with that. So if you have, you're, you are a five-person board. Okay, Tony works for you all. If there are differing opinions on certain topics that should come in front of the board or on assigning tasks, that's what the point of the agenda management and bringing up items that you want staff and/or the attorney to be working on. Now, if you want a slush fund for one-offs that come up, Flavia may have an easement. Ed may have some debris. Doug, you may have something else and you want to just assign a general task authorization for Tony and approve that. And it's a slush fund. And then anytime individually you call Tony to work on an item, I mean, that.
As long as we maintain it, I don't have a problem with that because there are things, I agree with Bob, things that I need to be able to do something. And he's got it. And otherwise we're not going to get it.
Well, in the past, it always happened. I didn't have a problem in the past, but now that we're getting more disciplined as an organization, that's the best way to say it. We need some.
Well, the easy way to do it.
Let's add that to, to our workshop. The only, only thing that I'm mindful of is when a, a board member
Is indirectly giving direction.
Is acting directly on the behalf of their community and leveraging district staff. And I'm not saying that that's right, wrong, or indifferent. I'm saying their optics on that, you know, could, could be sensitive.
This is a broader thing, like, you know, easements and things like that where it is general information.
Well, I would imagine that if it's an easement question, why is that not coming?
The problem is I can't call her to get it done and she can't authorize it because she doesn't have a budget. That's, that's the.
Would that not come out of Pelican's budget? If it's something acting on.
The board does.
She doesn't have a budget. That's a problem.
Well, no, what I'm saying is if, if, if there's an easement request or something that a community is needed.
Well, now, wait a minute. The 001 account, the 002 account have a line item for legal. It, it's not tied down. It's an open number. So we should be able to do it. And that would kind of a cost would get expended to that. And when we get to the point where the cup is running over, we either amend it to put more money in it or we stop.
We did it in the past.
My question was, if it's something that's coming from the community, wouldn't it be billed back to that?
Well, you're doing that when you do that. If, if he's got something on Pelican Reserve that impacts the 002, then whatever Tony's expenses are, they get billed to the 002 account for the response to that.
So they're not getting billed that way right now, right?
Well, it's easy for Tony.
When, when Tony is at these, these meetings in general, his, when he's acting as a general corporate council for the district, that gets split across the 001, 002 and 400 accounts. If there are tasks that he performs specific for utilities or stormwater or Parks and Rec or just for Pelican, they also have their own line items in the budget where those expenses are charged specifically to that. So if this were a Pelican-specific request, those normally come from PPAC because they approved a not-to-exceed budget for, specifically for researching the landscape, the landscape easement issues. So, and it's their budget to manage under the 002 and that, that would be something.
And under the direction of this board.
Correct.
I, I just don't see a problem as long as we've got an account and as long as it's got a positive budget in it. Tony, Tony, Tony knows, he's been around here long enough. This is his first rodeo. He can put an invoice out and if he spends $100, $200, $500 on an item and it's for Pelican Reserve, it goes into that account.
Absolutely.
And they're legal.
And as long as, as long as staff is aware.
Yeah, well, staff is aware, but staff's saying they did have the money to authorize him to do that.
I, this.
We've got the money. We've got that line item in every account.
Okay, it's not an issue of, it's, well, it is an issue of the money. There were some practices prior to my arrival at the district where individual board members were making requests of corporate council and the engineer, which resulted in some rather large expenses against those GL lines. So there was a determination that any direction for, for work to be done needed to come from the board and not a board member. And that was the crux of this conversation.
I didn't get into all that background. My recent thing wasn't on that scope.
Because the direction for Tony to expend the funds in that area should come from the board and not from a board member. If you would want to talk about it here, you're fine with Tony going ahead with it. You're deciding that as a board and then that, that.
I would much rather have this request come through.
Here.
In, in, in the board meeting if at all possible, or at least awareness coming back through, hey, by the way, I reached out to Tony.
Or the other one is if you want to control it, any board member that needs this information, we just simply go to Chelsea. She puts the request in and Tony gets the price.
I'm fine with that, but I got the resistance and we couldn't do it.
That's what that money is in that account for budget for. There are going to be reasons that you need legal and/or engineering on whatever projects we're doing. Something's going to come up.
And I totally agree. It should go through state. I have no problem with any of that.
I think that's probably best because we can also hold each other accountable. I mean, I would be the first one to say, hey, Bob, she is like 15 emails a week. You know what I mean? Send it to Chelsea and get the answer from Tony. And when the answer comes, it comes to all of us and there's not.
But what do you do when you send it to Chelsea and she says, I don't have money to answer?
But, but right now is what we're doing. I think if we give direction to Chelsea right now, that this is how it's going to go. If any of us have a question for Tony, we're going to come to you and send you the question. We're not CCing any of us. You reach out to Tony and when Tony gives the answer, he gives it to all of us. And I think that's fine. It's nice and easy.
The crux of the issue was that the question couldn't go to Tony.
But are you okay with this way?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Are you okay with this way? Because it goes to you, you're involved. And you may even know, you, you know, if it goes to you and you say, hey, Bob, I actually already have an answer. Here's the email from last year with that answer and send it out to you. So she can even give you the answer without Tony, as long as the answer was coming from Tony from a previous board members. Does that make sense?
Clarify.
I think we may want to sort of bullet point it because we've got a number of different directions. And as Lawrence obviously had mentioned, I have separate billing codes. I have a general billing code, one for utility and we have separate PO. Lawrence set that process up last year, which has been very helpful. So if I build Pelican Reserve at 7689.018, Stony Brook has its own.
Is this a temperature or is this a?
That's his code.
Yeah, so I have different codes for utilities, Parks and Rec.
But the key though is we get to, we get closer to the end of the year. And if this board has eaten up PPAC's budget for.
That's where we got to watch the number. But the secret is right there.
Well, this is a curious.
We want to make, we want to make sure that with the board, the PPAC has set aside a specific amount for Tony to do work that they're requesting. So we want to make sure that the board doesn't eat into what PPAC is already planning to spend on legal fees for this year.
And this is probably going to be.
So where are we at?
So this is going to be unpopular. I mean, well, we, we said things are going to go through, go through Chelsea. It'll be visible, transparent to the board when, when, when a request comes through from a board member with requests for legal that is going to burn dollars. And I think that's reasonable because what, what I don't want, you know, what I don't want the optics to be is that a board member is acting in their own special interest for their community that is utilizing district dollars.
Well, there's no other place, I don't understand, Stony Brook and Pelican have these sites. The other communities, we don't have that. We don't have that. So we, we don't have that opportunity.
So it's just for those two communities, really?
The only way I could see it ever coming in would be if you've got some type of a development that's occurring in your community that's the non-two public communities, Stony Brook and Pelican. That would be the only time I would think that something could come up that would even involve you at all. Because you'd go to your own attorney to get anything on easements and all that kind of stuff.
Do you want to give up an example?
I'm trying to remember the one that we, that we, and I was drawing a blank. Was this the, the McAdam Cart Path around?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Here's an example. We have a McAdam Cart Path around Conservation Area 6. So my question to Tony was, is that part, Ed went through two, is that part of the conservation area? Or is that area owned by somebody else? And there was two reasons for asking this. We had a community that had some traffic calming devices installed. Did they have the, and it was done. It was done through Castle. I have no idea if it was legal or not. So I wanted to know, did they have the right to do that? And then number two is we're now looking at a couple of options of what we might do for the ADA compliance in the reserve or.
Who's we though? Who's we looking?
Safety and security.
The safety and security work group is looking into this.
Yes.
And so when you go to your attorney first?
So, but then why is Bob, that's what I was going to say, then why is Bob into that?
Okay, we've been dealing with this since August. We've been dealing with.
We have a committee that reports to us, but it doesn't seem like that's how it's happening.
We're not, well, remember, we just established these things tonight. But we have these kinds of issues that are called pop-ups where you can't do anything until you understand the boundaries. So that was simply, and I know, you know, Tony got authorization at the last PPAC meeting to do other easements within the community. Some of the landscape easements, but this pops up into the same sort of thing. So again, this is not a, a Mount Everest. It's a very minor thing. We ought to be able to find out pretty quickly.
I agree.
Again, my deal is go, go to Chelsea, Chelsea's, as long as we have a budget and we have money in that account and it's a reasonable deal that is assigned to that budget, then, then we do it.
If that happened, I wouldn't be talking.
And then that billing just becomes transparent when those requests come through. So we want to know who's, you know, who's making those requests.
So when individual, when individual board members make a request of using Tony's time or Tetra Tech's time, then we automatically approve those and let the attorney and the engineer look into those items without, without board approval.
As long as there, there's funds in those accounts. I mean, that's why we set these things up.
And if somebody's abusing it, then I would certainly challenge them on that abuse and bring it here. Absolutely. If you, in your judgment, when that request comes through, this is really goofy. We shouldn't be doing this. Then I would expect that item to be challenged.
Well, and I think that's why we've implemented the agenda management and the opportunity to bring things up that you'd like to see as pet projects.
Here's the question. Was your request time-sensitive?
Yeah, it's very time-sensitive.
And what's the driver behind it?
Because right now we have a couple of considerations of whether we should be challenging what's going on in this.
I mean, is it something that could have waited a week or not waited a week? And so I think what she's, what she's trying to say is, should it come to the board to say, hey?
This has been ongoing since July and here we are, we're almost in November and I haven't gotten square one due.
To me, this is, it's, it's, it's way too, it's way too small, picky to be coming to the full board.
Absolutely.
It comes to the full board when his, his pot's out of money. That's when we got.
Or if the request is abusive.
Do what?
Or if the request is abusive.
How do we define whether a request is abusive or not?
The request is not on point. If it's an issue that's on point of. The request is not on point. If it's an issue that's on point of something that needs to be done, which an easement and a conservation easement, easement conflict is certainly on point. I mean, there is no argument about that.
Ultimately, Tony works for the board. So I, I, I can't dictate what Tony does. I can work with Tony, but he works for you five.
But when a request is not forwarded to him, because.
I think that could be the clear policy is the board just request it to Tony and CCs myself.
Okay.
And then you will let, you will let the board know when there's.
Tony can, Tony can.
Tony will respond and include all of us and just say, did not respond. Here's the answer.
Oh, I always do that.
I'm just saying, I'm just reminding.
I might even blind copy. I might even do the blind copy.
Tony's invoice should be very clear on this for services rendered in response to Bob Geppert's deal. Requested by, and you got it, and you got it all and it's done.
And then if we have an issue, hey, Bob, you made 10 requests to Tony this week.
I agree.
I want to start doing requests for Pelican Reserve and running that budget.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, great. Thank you all.
Isn't that enough?
Burn that money.
I will call the meeting adjourned at four fifty-one. Thank you all.
Thank you.